Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to today's meeting of Liverpool City Council's Virtual Planning Committee. Before I formally start proceedings and bring the Chair and members of the committee in, I just need to conduct a brief technical check to ensure members can hear and be seen clearly. So firstly, the Chair, councillor O'Brien, can you see and hear us okay?
I can see and hear you.
Thanks, Trish. Helen?
Yes, I can see and hear you, thank you.
Thanks, Helen. Billy?
Yeah, I can see and hear you, thank you, Michael.
Tony? Tony? Just unmute your mic, Tony. You're not coming through.
Can you hear me now?
That's better, thank you, Tony. Richard?
I think everything's working fine, Mike.
Thank you, Richard. Anthony? Malcolm?
Yeah, um, am I... Oh, there I am. I might have to put a light on.
I think he will, it's a little bit dark.
Yeah, well, I mean, the sun's shining in here. I'm not sure why that's the case. Let me just put a light on, see if we may play this.
Thank you, Malcolm. And just as a reminder to members of the public, agents and applicants, please at this point turn your video feed off and your microphone off, just so that it's members visible at this moment. Thank you. At this stage, councillor Cummings, I believe, he just joined us. Are you able to hear us okay?
Yeah.
Fantastic. That's excellent. Um, Hanson's not joined us at this stage, but he can join us, join proceedings as we make a start, and I'll confirm when he is visible on screen. So with that in mind, just a reminder to colleagues, in terms of dealing with the items of business before us, we've got a number of applications today and speakers for various items of business. Applicants and agents will be allowed up to five minutes to address committee, and for each item, we're also going to have visuals on screen to assist you as members, and also for any public viewing today, so you can see quite clearly the details of each application. So agents and applicants, if you've registered to speak, you're allowed up to five minutes. Please pause at the end of your address, because members of the committee may wish to ask questions, but to be clear, there's no questions from any registered speakers. With any objectives, and again, for objectives, there's typically more, you're allowed up to three minutes to address committee, and again, members of the committee may ask a few questions of you, so be prepared to answer those. In terms of the practical conduct of votes, I would ask the committee only when I'm conducting votes, to ensure that your video camera's active and your microphone is unmuted when I call you out by name and ask you to speak clearly for the benefit of the public record. With that in mind, I'll therefore take us into the formal items of business. So firstly, apologies for absence, which I have from councillor Juarez. Welcome to councillor Kemp, and from councillor Steve Bradford as well. Councillor Hanson will be joining us shortly, I understand. In terms of declarations of interest, do we have any to declare from members, please?
Yeah.
Go ahead, councillor Thompson.
Um, I have an interest on item four, the land at Nailers Road and Paveley Bank.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Do you intend to speak as well when we get to that item as well?
Uh, yes, I would like to speak, please.
Okay, thank you. Alan, we'll bring you in due course. Billy, did you want to declare?
Yeah, declared an interest in item six, Michael. And we've objected as councillors.
Do you want to speak on it as well, Billy?
No, no.
Okay, that's great. Any other members of the committee want to declare an interest? Okay, I'm trying, I'm just going to unmute everyone for purposes of clarity. With that in mind, can I now refer members to your agenda pack, as published online, which comprises the minutes of our last virtual meeting, as held on the 2nd of June, pages four to thirteen. Now, if I could ask members to indicate if you have any comments to raise. If not, can you just all, as members of the committee, collectively unmute your microphone and indicate if those are agreeable to you?
Agreed.
Agreed.
That's excellent. Thank you, everyone. I've got no urgent items of business to report today, so with the agreement of the Chair, I'll move us straight on to item number four, which is our first item of business today, and which relates to the land at Nailers Road at the junction with Paveley Bank in Liverpool 27, which is in Belvape Ward. Chair?
I invite Brian Mason to address the committee now. Would you come in here, Brian?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to ask my colleague to also display a presentation on screen, so Brian can talk over that as well. The presentation will come on screen shortly, then I'll ask Brian to actually start commenting. Brian, if you want to go ahead?
Okay. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members of the planning committee. My name's Brian Mason from Planning Conditions Limited, and I'm the agent for the scheme before you today, which is for the erection of six dwellings with vehicular access, parking, landscaping, including the closure of part of Paveley Bank to the rear of numbers nineteen to twenty-two Paveley Bank and situated off Nailers Road. As no doubt, members are fully aware, a key role of the planning system to provide enough homes to address population growth and the council's LLP, Liverpool Local Planings, to address that through housing delivery and demand. The site before you today goes a long way to supporting those very important principles. I'd like to take the opportunity to explain to members the three-year-long history of this application and how it's significantly changed for the better from that outset, and had as a consequence only of continuous dialogue, discussions and meetings with your officers. I'll start. The application was submitted as a pre-application on the 22nd of January 2017. Following that initial advice, the formal application, then, with all accompanying support and reports, was submitted as a scheme for eight houses. Next slide, please. Do you... Next slide, please.
I'm just going to ask my colleague to advance one slide again. She's having a layout side and original submission visible now.
Thank you. You'll see from the slide, the application for seven units with limited footways, access to Paveley Bank, which is restricted to the rear of the properties, and also limited access to the substation. You'll see that part of Paveley Bank to the rear of the development still, still open and available for the general public. Over the course of the next two and a half years, the scheme was amended dramatically and changed, significantly improved, as it was redesigned by listening to council officers' response to that original application, and indeed, as it's fair to say, understandably so as well. Briefly, 2018, an amended scheme removing one house was then proposed, so the detached house, which you can see at the bottom of that plan, was removed. 2018, further elevational changes, especially to the gable ends. Further again, 2018, in the garden space. 2019, amended scheme incorporating the roadway to the rear of Paveley Bank at the request of planning officers on the ground staff to leave that roadway in situ would result in potential antisocial behaviour and criminal activity. Significant discussions then were had with the likes of SP Power Systems, who required the roadway, obviously, for access to the substation, to which they've agreed an alternative access with rights at all cost to a client. Again, 2019, consultation with Riverside Housing Association to seek approval from their residents and board, who back onto that roadway of Paveley Bank. Their board eventually agreed approval, and there were no objections from local residents, who, I understand, they consulted. In fact, as I understand from representatives of the Housing Association, they saw the amended scheme and enclosure of that roadway as a significant safety and security improvement to their individual homes and peaceful enjoyment, which, members maybe were, is an issue, a planning issue of residential amenity. 2020, again, further agreements with Riverside Housing Association to incorporate a small triangular parcel of land within a development that falls within their ownership. It's a small section, which is just at the junction of Paveley Bank at the top end of the screen. Next slide, please. Once again, the council asks for the applicant to fund speed cushions in the immediate area, which again, the applicant has just backed... That's right. You'll see the layout now, only proposing six houses, with the roadway of Paveley Bank enclosed within the curtilage of those properties. The council has asked for the applicant to also fund speed cushions in the immediate area, which again, the applicant agreed to do so. And finally, the case officer and senior officers all agreed that the scheme is now being designed through careful collaboration and discussion, to point that it is policy compliant, and therefore, it follows that the scheme before you today is recommended for approval by your officers. It's noted within your officer's report on page three that there are no objections or comments from the amended scheme following the reconsultation process. Granted, there were objections to the original scheme, however, these have been addressed as your case officer carefully reports through the report before you. Members may raise the issue of green space in your safe policy OE11, however, in point 1.3 of your officer's report, it clearly sets out the policy considerations and concludes that this small area functions as a highway verge and is dissected by a substation from the main part of the functioning green space, which incidentally, the substation as part of the revised scheme now forms a clear boundary for site to that larger area of green space. That does indeed have a purpose. The question of the impact on the loss of green space, again, is well documented within the case officer's report. It includes, it provides no purpose of green space, nor does it provide a vista, no value and no value in amenity terms. Further, there's also no direct or indirect access to the green space from this site, and no relationship to the wider area. Your officer reports this clearly for members, as it is an important consideration for you today. It has no ecological value, no nature conservation value, that would require a level of protection through planning consideration and policy. I'll try and summarise. As such, and to quote from your officer's report of paragraph 1.5, it is considered that with the principle of new residential development is acceptable, and what accords with the principle of sustainable development, as members will know, is set out within the MPPF, as I mentioned earlier, and the council's safe policy OE11, and emerging policy G11 of the LLP, Liverpool Local Plan. The report states between paragraphs two to five, that comprehensively, after three years of amendments, improvements and careful assessment, the scheme before members today is policy compliant, especially having careful regard to the design, scale, massing, access and parking, residential amenity, especially now that the roadway to the rear has been included within the development as amended, in order to prevent antisocial behaviour and provide security and safety for local residents, both for the proposed new houses and the existing ones. And finally, with the improvements to road safety through proposed traffic calming measures by condition. Just to add also, the scheme requires a stopping up of the public highway, known as Paveley Bank, and this will be the subject of a separate statutory application, subject to members approving the scheme today. This application, if nothing else, tells me, along with that, before it was taken and put before this committee, it demonstrates that whilst planning applications may be submitted with challenges, obstacles, in the first instance, a scheme which was unacceptable to the city, understandably, that you time actively, proactively work with officers, the community and local organisations, like SP Power Systems and Riverside Housing, to deliver a much-needed housing scheme, which now satisfies all policies and has no objections, as members will have seen from the reconsultation compared to the first consultation exercise. Finally, it therefore follows that your officer's report concludes, and again, I quote from the summary of point six within the report, that the application accords with the aims and objectives of the MPPF, and your UDP, and emerging LLP policies, and therefore, I would respectfully request that members endorse the officer's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions. Thank you for your time today. And apologies, it was so fast.
Thank you, Brian. That's great. I believe councillor Thompson's indicated that she wishes to address committee at this stage, so councillor Thompson, if you'd like to unmute your microphone, but you may prefer for the slides to be on screen, if that's okay?
Um, yeah, that's fine, thank you. Um, I'm speaking today to object to this proposal on behalf of myself and my two fellow councillors. And there are three reasons that we still object to this. One of them is the traffic issues on Nailers Road, which is really quite a busy road, all the time, to be honest, but the traffic backs up at that junction with Chilwell Valley Road and King's Drive at key times of the day. We're disappointed that after all the amendments that have been made, there still wasn't found a way to have access from Paveley Bank. And I do understand all the issues about potential ASB, and that is a potential problem in that area, but I think there are ways where rear access could have been organised, and other ways that potential ASB could have been addressed. The fact that it would have been an active back road would have gone somewhere to addressing ASB. It could have been made a private road for those houses, and there could have been CCTV. So I'm really disappointed that we're still going to have cars potentially backing onto Nailers Road from those houses. We're also disappointed that the overlooking issues haven't been sufficiently addressed, in our opinion. There are still a couple of those houses that are slightly closer than they ought to be to twenty-two Paveley Bank, and we're still not convinced that those two-storey houses will not be able to look over the wall into the bungalows on Paveley Bank. Our third issue, I realise this isn't really a planning concern, unless it's possible to put some sort of condition in the agreement, but we're quite concerned about the fact that these are going to be for private rent. We have lots of problems dotted about all over the ward with houses that are rented privately, and landlords that are completely uncontactable. And we would ask, with respect, that the landlords would make themselves known to us, so that if there are any issues, we can work together to resolve them, and if it's possible to put some sort of condition in the proposal, we would welcome that. Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions from members of the committee. Chair, if you care to bring in the case officer now, which I believe is Stuart Clark for this application. Stuart, if you could unmute your mic and put your video on, please?
Hi, Mike. Can everybody see and hear me?
We can, thank you, Stuart. Do you need the slides on screen to help you at all?
Um, I should be okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Stuart Clark, I'm the team leader for the South team. And you've had a very detailed presentation from the applicant, and you've seen the slides in front of you. And so I don't intend to go through the report in detail, I'll just sort of hit the headlines and try and address the issues that councillor Thompson raised. And as you've heard, this is a proposal for six dwellings that was significantly redesigned through the process, through collaboration with officers, to specifically try and design our ASB, whilst retaining an active frontage onto Nailers Road. And we believe that the scheme before you now has achieved that, having completely secure boundaries, and doesn't leave any ability for youths or anyone doing anything on towards to get in between two high boundaries. So in urban design terms, we believe that that's a good solution. In terms of the open space issues, this is dealt with comprehensively in your report, and I don't intend to go through all that, other than to say that your officers conclude that the site in question has no recreational function and a very limited amenity value, and therefore, its loss in terms of the green space is considered to be acceptable. In terms of the highways, councillor Thompson, right, this was a very carefully balanced application in that respect, to the extent that we went and sought third-party advice as to where this one was sitting. That third-party advice came back and said, on balance, they considered the scheme to be acceptable in highway terms, subject to the imposition of traffic calming measures, which the agent referred to in his presentation. Um, so on the back of that, Chair, we were happy that the scheme that's before you now is acceptable, and your officers are happy to recommend it. In terms of the specific issues that councillor Thompson raised, as I said before, traffic side of things, the comments were noted, it was something that was shared to some extent by colleagues in highways, which is why we took the step to go and get a third-party review on it, and that came back as being acceptable. And in terms of the overlooking issue, that again is clearly detailed in the report. It's acknowledged that there's some slightly substandard distances, but then, if you look at the wider urban grain of the area, those distances are common to this part of the world. And so we're happy that in terms of urban grain and the level of overlooking, that's the level that... And then finally, in terms of tenure, that's not something that we can control, I'm afraid. And so it's not something that we can consider in the assessment. But after all that, Chair, we're happy this is a scheme that we can support and we can recommend to you, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stuart. If, I believe councillor Cummings has a question to say for you. Councillor Cummings, if you could unmute your microphone, please?
Thank you, Chair. Stuart, and I'm originally from that area, and from what I can remember, there has been no other building in that area, and it's been wasteland for a long time. Am I right in that?
Um, I perhaps wouldn't call it wasteland. Wasteland, it's a green space and it's maintained, but in your officer's opinion, it has very little functionality in terms of recreation and in visual amenity terms, and we've got this substation that sort of subdivides this piece of green space, so driving this particular bit off is quite a natural break, and the benefits that it will bring at the moment, the properties in Paveley Bank back onto Nailers Road, so all you see is a big high wall, which in visual terms and urban design terms is not great. This will create an active street steam. Um, so we believe that the development of this particular site, this particular part of the green space, would be beneficial in urban design terms.
Well, thank you.
Can you hear me? This is the Chair. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, because before, I wasn't heard, even though I thought I had unmuted the microphone, but did actually notice that councillor Kennedy raised his hand, and actually, I noticed that before councillor Cummings indicated electronically. So I'd like to invite councillor Kennedy now to speak.
Yeah, hopefully I won't be too much interrupted by the drilling and everything here. My questions relate to the planning documents, so it's very much on planning issues. I know that the UDP, which is the starting point, had this area as green space, and the local plan also has this area as green space, and I refer back to when I was cabinet member, and I remember going through the Strategic Housing Land Availability Assessment. I, at that time, was making great efforts to actually show that we had sufficient land to put houses on, and various pieces of land became rather controversial at the time as to whether houses should be built on them. Now, going through that strategic land availability assessment, my presumption, as the land in the local plan is designated as green space, was not included in the areas of land that would be used for housing, and that we'd identified many other areas of land which would be sufficient to cover our need over the years. So I'd like some clarification on that. It seems to me that if we're going to use planning documents, and every planning document indicates that this was not for housing, there really should be a really good reason why it is being suggested that it is used for housing.
Thank you, councillor. Um, yeah, you're quite correct. And with the local plan moving forward, as I understand it today, and it's a rolling calculation, is that we do have the five-year supply for residential across the city that we currently need. So this is what's known as a windfall site, it's something that comes up outside of the allocated sites that we have, and what I would refer you back to is paragraph 1.2 in your committee report, which specifically deals with this aspect and the green space, and it's clear in so far that it says, green space is a descriptive term, and all the green space allocations in the city are done on that basis, there's no qualitative assessment on them, and the policy does allow you to look at each individual green space on its merits, and if it's concluded that there's no inherent value in that green space, then you're perfectly still compliant with the policy. So we've done, and we've gone through that process here, and looked at the value of the green space, and that's clearly detailed in paragraph 1.3 in your report as to why we form that view, and that's the reason that we consider that the loss of this green space isn't going to undermine the aims and objectives of policy OE11 in this particular circumstance.
Are there any other questions?
Can I come back on that?
Come in, councillor.
It seems to me, and again, this is for clarification, that it's very unusual for these windfall sites to be considered, other than being acceptable for development. It's unsurprising to me that each piece of land, it seems to be that it is concluded that they have no inherent value. Can I just ask, and this is not related to planning so much, but is the windfall referred to in that somebody actually wants to buy it so that there is money involved?
No, a windfall is, it's more to do with the sort of local plan and the housing allocations, is that we identify a certain number of sites across the city that can take so many dwellings, but it's in the knowledge that there will always be other sites that we haven't identified that we're also to go into that five-year supply pot, and they're just known as windfall sites, it's got no monetary value whatsoever attached to it. It's a term that plugs into the local plan five-year supply figures, as sites that we haven't identified originally, but then, as time goes on, for whatever reason, sites become available that weren't previously, and therefore, they can be added into the five-year supply, but because they weren't originally allocated, they're classed as windfall sites. If that helps.
It does help, it does help. I mean, it just seems to, again, it seems to me that everything is a rolling process, and that we never get to a point where a planning document actually is a planning document, but that's just my cynicism.
I think it's probably time, if there are no other questions, to move to the vote.
Yeah, I'm starting to get in here.
I do also think councillor Kennedy that we don't want to have things written in stone, do we, on planning? We need to be able to move and adapt to modern conditions. So I'm going to let the recommendation be approved.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're calling councillor Hanson then. Councillor Hanson, would you like to speak now? Before... I can hear you now, yes. Go ahead, councillor.
Joe, if you could unmute your microphone, please, Joe? Joe, if you could just unmute your microphone, so we can hear you?
Terrible trouble here, this morning, I'm in and out of this...
You can hear you now, thanks, Joe.
Right, the question to Stuart is that, within the local plan is designated as green space, and then, somebody decides, I'm assuming it's officers, that's no longer green space, so we can do, in essence, what we can do, whatever we want, because it's a windfall. So within that process that says, in the local plan it's green, then tomorrow it's brown, who's involved in that process? And I'm assuming, well, I'm guessing, that local politicians aren't involved in that process. That's an arbitrary decision made by officers. So the question would be, what discussion, what debate did you have with the local representative before you changed the status of that piece of land?
Okay. We're not changing the status of the land, it's still allocated as green space.
But it's still green.
Sorry? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
I think it's...
I lost you again.
That one person speaks at a time. Logic can't seem to deal with people interjecting. So can we let Stuart speak, and then, Joe, I'll come back to you. Stuart, carry on, please.
Okay, so the allocation remains green space, officers don't change that in any way, shape or form. The only way that that site changes is if you, as a planning committee, resolve to approve this application. You will be the decision-makers as to whether that site remains green, or you allow six houses to be built on it. What we're saying is, is that as part of the assessment process, which is clearly set out in your papers as to how you're meant to assess the green space value, is we don't consider it's got much value. So therefore, if members of this planning committee choose to resolve to approve the application, then it will become a windfall site by virtue of that decision. So it's members who will make the decision, it's not officers. We are just putting a recommendation forward on the basis of the fact that we've seen before, is that we don't believe, in terms of its value, that it has much value at all, and therefore, the benefits of bringing the site forward for six houses, and all the other reasons that are detailed in the report, we are recommending approval. It's clearly open to you as a committee to completely disagree with that view if you so choose to, but ultimately, for it to become a windfall site, it would need a planning permission. But ultimately, for it to become a windfall site, it would need a planning permission, and that would be determined by members today.
Can I come back?
Yes, please. Yes, it's important.
I am losing more than what I'm getting, it keeps breaking up all over the place and kicking me out, so please forgive me. But as I understand it, then, the local representative within that area, they are asking that green space remains as green space.
Am I correct? That's a question you'd have to ask the ward councillors. They don't raise that as an objection in the representation.
Look, can I ask, go back to Helen and ask Helen, is that the unwritten guidance that the local councillors are asking us to agree with?
The fact that it was green space wasn't of particular concern to us. And we accepted the view that that brick wall immediately behind it is not a good view and that to have some sort of active frontage on that bit of road, which is actually still set back a little way from the junction, that was acceptable to the three of us. That wasn't...
I don't know what Helen says. You'd like to turn now, councillor Hanson, but group of citizens, keep the first over one another. Would you like to take your turn now, councillor Hanson?
I believe the chair's asking councillor Hanson if he wants to make any further comments. Helen, for the benefit of the members of the committee and for purposes of clarity, because I've got a number of members having a few issues with their audio feed, could you just confirm the position of yourself and if you're able to your ward colleagues as regards your views of the status of this site? Firstly, in relation to its green space and whether that is a particular reason you object to its proposed development or whether it's mainly around the other issues you've already set out. Thank you.
Thank you. It's mainly around the other issues. So the green space designation of that piece of land wasn't of particular concern to us. It was more to do with potential traffic problems and potential overlooking issues and going forward, if it's accepted, being able to work well with the landlord or landlords.
I think we're fairly clear on that, councillor Thompson. And that was fairly clear from the planning agenda if we read the initial objections from the councillors on the first round of consultation. Can I invite councillor Merritt to come in now, please?
Thanks, Geoff. Stuart, why are you saying because it's prevalent, the overlooking issue, it's prevalent in other parts of this area, it's okay now with a new build?
What I'm trying to explain is that the urban grain, basically the character of this part of the city, just like, for example, if you consider terrace properties in Waverley or something like that, the urban grain there is they're quite tight. So if we were looking at new development in that part of the world, we'd be probably being accepting to lesser interface distances because that's characteristic of that area. So in terms of this part of the world, the interface distances in and around this area are comparable to what's being proposed here. So what we're saying is that they're comparable. We accept they're slightly below what's in our normal standards, but that is a guide at the end of the day. And we're being somewhat led by two things, the regen benefits of bringing the site into use, but also have in regard to what the wider area is and what those interfaces are. So given they're comparable and similar, we don't think that this would be unacceptable.
Thank you.
I haven't got anybody else indicating that they have a question, so I'll just check. Has anybody got another question? So I'm now going to move to the votes and I move that the recommendation be approved.
Thank you, Chair. Does any member wish to move an amendment before we proceed to the vote? No? In which case, we'll take a vote on the chair's recommendation, the effect of which will be to approve the application. So first of all, to you, Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Well, I was inclined to vote against, but after hearing the local councillor, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you, Malcolm. Councillor Cummings? Thank you. Councillor Merritt?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Councillor Hanson? Thank you, Joe. Councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. That concludes the vote on this item of business. Councillor Thompson being unable to vote, I bet you having declared an interest on this item. So for purposes of clarity, the voting is six in favour, none against, two abstentions. Therefore, the application is carried and approved on that basis. We will now, therefore, move on to our next item of business, number five on today's agenda, which relates to land to the rear of numbers 25 and 26, Paberry Street, Liverpool 8, in Princess Park Ward. We don't have any speakers registered for this particular item of business, so I'm going to ask my colleague to display some visuals of the site and the application proposal on screen now. And I would ask the case officer, Stuart Clark, to comment in relation to those images and to then also pick up any questions from members of the committee.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, Mike, thank you. Yes, members will be aware of this type of application. We've had quite a few on recent committees. Therefore, 20-metre-high 5G telecommunications masts. And it boils down to being able to determine it on sighting and design reasons alone. In terms of its site, and this is proposed to go into a small public green space away from the highway. Just consider this to be an acceptable location as it's got the minimal visual impact. And whilst acknowledging that the benefits that 5G delivers, there will clearly be some impact visually from these masts because they're obviously of a height and a width. But this is considered to be the optimum location so as to have the minimum impact in that respect. In terms of the design of the masts, again, you will have heard this previously, they are of a height because they need to be of a height to be able to get an unimpeded signal out for the site coverage that they deliver to the local population. As is explained in your report, these masts regrettably have to go where the areas of demand are, and that normally means residential areas. So we have to try and find sites that are acceptable, albeit that there will be some impact. And in this instance, we believe this is the site that will probably have the least impact rather than locating it hard on the street scene outside somebody's house. So off the back of that, Chair, we're happy to recommend approval of the application, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Well, I don't see anybody indicating, so can I move that the recommendation be approved?
Thank you, Chair. Before we move to the vote, and just if members have any amendments to move, please indicate now, I'll move to you. No? In which case, we'll conduct the vote on the item. Over to you, Chair.
So I recommend that the recommendation be approved, and I agree with that.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Kemp, is your next visible on screen?
I just wanted to ask a question. I don't know where the hand-up thing is, to do it electronically. In this case, could you tell me, Stuart, whether there are any attempts to mitigate the appearance of this? For example, by planting round the base station, colouring of the masts to mitigate what is always going to be a fairly ugly operation? And could you tell me what the distance is from the nearest residential accommodation?
Okay, in terms of the camouflaging aspect, that is something that, particularly on smaller masses, is more easy to do with these larger ones, coupled with the fact that they have open headframes. So it's very difficult to try and camouflage a street pole. And you'll see them all over the city, albeit you'll be used to the slightly smaller ones, which may not have about 12 to 14 metres. But none of them are camouflaged because if you, particularly, if you try and camouflage sometimes things, they got ridiculous on their own because they've got no context. In terms of planting trees in and around them, there's a couple of issues there. A is the, try and avoid any ingress into the cabling system from roots. But more importantly, is as the trees grow, if they grow too big, then they start interfering with the signals. And all that will happen is you'll end up with the trees getting locked to ensure that the signal is capable of still happening. And companies have powers under their own legislation to do that. So it's been accepted citywide for some years now, up to this point. Clearly, it's up to members to decide whether they wish to change that. But street poles are part of the urban furniture and they're like street columns. It's better to say they are what they are, so as to speak. So that's the way we've always taken these forward, and that's what's before members today. In terms of the colouring side of things, this has been discussed before, and actually, Chair, I'd recommend an amendment to condition two, if members are minded to approve, to remove the obligation under 2A, which is to paint the mast green. And the reason that we say that is that whilst the cabinets are visible and experienced at ground level and will blend into greenery, the masts tend to be seen against the sky. So if you actually paint the mast, it's probably going to make it more obvious against the lighter background. So by virtue of it being grey, it will blend better. And so the cabinets are completely agreed, councillor Kemp, they should be coloured, blended to its relevance around these. But the mast, we're of the view that it should be grey to blend as best we can with the sky, so it minimises that impact.
I've just asked Stuart whether he's heard of bushes as distinct to a tree at a base station.
Again, it's not something that we've ever done or ever asked for. As I said before, street cabinets, whether they're there by consent or by permitted development, like the BT Open Reach and all that, they're quite an accepted part of the street furniture now. So it's not something we've ever asked for. I don't know if we can condition it because the requirement would be outside of the application site and it's on land that the applicant wouldn't own.
Just to confirm, Stuart, I don't believe we will be able to condition it because the application site, the actual area to which councillor Kemp would be referring to, which would require the planting to take place in, A, it's outside of the application site and B, it's outside the control of the applicant in this instance, it will be a separate process.
It is. You could technically do it through a section 106 agreement, but there would be need to be, we'd only ever do that where we were losing trees and having to replace them as a requirement of the policy.
Point is, we own the land anyway.
We do, to the best of my knowledge.
Yeah. But we could insist on it, it's a landowner.
It's about the methodology of delivering that, because it's outside the application site and you would have to get a monetary value off the telecoms operator to give to us to then go and plant the relevant bushes, et cetera, et cetera. The problem that we have with this particular type of application is it's a prior approval application, and we only have a particular period of time that we can deal with them, which means it would probably preclude the ability to get a section 106. We do it with planning applications, but I've never known us do it with a prior approval. I'm not even sure if legally you can do a section 106 with a prior approval.
Well, I mean, again, here, I did actually propose a vote on that, and I want that to go ahead. Also, I can see if you electronically indicate or if you put your hand up. So either of those would do, but in that respect, if you speak, the camera should go on to you. So if there's any others, go away for me as Chair to see that you have got a question. Because we seem to be getting our communications inaccurately over this. And I know that councillor Kemp is going again for somebody else, so he's not used to the system. But I would say on this one, it doesn't seem possible that we can put in a condition at the last minute. So I'm going to move that the recommendation, as it stands, be approved. And I would ask us to move to the vote.
Councillor O'Brien, before we move to the vote, just referencing back to the comments raised by the case officer in relation to the amendment to condition two, in terms of the colour of the mast not being required to be green in light of this blending better with the skyline. Just to confirm if your resolution reflects that amendment to condition two, as long as you're happy with that?
Yes, it does reflect that.
Thank you, Chair. Are there any amendments or further comments from members before we move to the vote again? No? In which case, again, I'm going to go from left to right, but I'll start with the chair again. Chair, can you just reaffirm your previous vote, please?
Agreed.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Kemp? Just confirm your vote again, Richard? Just unmute your microphone, please, we didn't catch you. Abstained, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Thompson? Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Helen? Malcolm?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Merritt?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. That concludes the vote on this particular item of business. And just for purposes of clarity, the voting is eight in favour, no votes against and one abstention. Therefore, the application is approved and councillor Kemp will note your individual dissent to this item of business as well. With a mind, we'll therefore move straight on to our next item of business on today's agenda, item number six, in relation to Walton Breck Road, Liverpool 4, in Anfield Ward. Similar to our last item of business, we have no speakers registered for this item today, so I will ask my colleague to display some images of the application site at this point. And if the case officer could unmute their microphone at this stage and provide members with a summary of some of the key issues, if they could, please, pending any questions from members of the committee.
Thank you, Chair. Members, can everybody see and hear me?
Thank you, John, we can.
Thank you. My name is John Hayes, I'm the team leader for the North team. Chair, this is, again, a similar application to the one that you've just dealt with. It's a telecommunications mast to enable the delivery of 5G technology. The mast would be located immediately in front of the cabbage hall pub, as you can see from the images. The height of the mast would be slightly higher than the overall existing height of the cabbage hall, but it would obviously be seen against that background. There is also some existing street furniture in the form of lamp posts nearby. And your officer's view is, given its context, the position of the site, the height of it and so on, is acceptable and would not have a harmful effect on visual amenity. Again, Chair, as in the previous application, this is a prior approval application, we can only consider matters of sighting and design. You'll see from the report that have been a significant number of objections to this application, including the impacts on property prices and health effects and so on. In relation to health effects, those matters are obviously addressed in the report. It is not something that your officers are able to take into account, provided that the usual certification is provided. And again, as this committee is familiar, property prices are not matters that can be taken into account in the planning process. Chair, I'm happy to answer any further questions that members may have, but for the reasons set out in the report, we would recommend approval, subject to the conditions stated. You'll see from condition three, Chair, that we've recommended in this particular case that both the cabinets and the mast be painted in a grey colour. If you or members of the committee feel that needs to be altered in some way, then we can, of course, change that condition to allow some flexibility around colour. Happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Now, I think councillor Kennedy was indicating, I could see your hand, Malcolm, did you want to speak? Malcolm?
It's because I'm using a smartphone, I've sometimes got to expand the
Oh, it's okay then. You don't want to speak.
I was fiddling with the screen.
All right. Nobody else seems to be indicating to speak. Does anybody have any questions? Well, it would not seem so. So can I move that the recommendation be approved?
Thank you, Chair. Any amendments first before we move to the vote? No, in which case we'll proceed with voting. Chair, if you could confirm your vote, please?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy, if you could confirm your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat, if you could confirm your vote?
Against.
Councillor Kemp, if you could confirm your vote? Councillor Thompson, if you could confirm your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Lavelle, if you could confirm your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception, if you could confirm your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings, your vote, please?
Agreed.
Councillor Hanson, your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat, just before I announce the votes, I think he did declare this item of business, in which case I will not be counting your vote for purposes of this calculation. Therefore, with that in mind, the voting on this application is as follows. That is seven in favour, one against. Therefore, the application is carried on that basis. Councillor Kemp, would you like your dissent recorded by name again? Thank you. Will do. With that in mind, therefore, the application is approved and we'll move on to our next item of business, today's agenda, which relates to number 319 Grafton Street, Liverpool eight in Riverside Ward. Similar to our last two items of business, we don't have any registered speakers, either in support or against this item of business. So again, I'm going to ask a colleague to display some visuals and images of the site at this stage. And also if the case officer could at this stage unmute your microphone, so he could provide an overview and commentary on the issues relating to this particular application.
Yes. Thank you, Mike. All members are going to have in front of you for this one, I'm afraid, is the red line plan that's on the screen now. The reason for that is this is an application in outline with all matters reserved. So what the application seeks to do is just to establish the principle of getting some form of residential on that site. It originally came in with, I think it was 26 units, 29 units, sorry. And we asked for further information from the applicant to demonstrate that wouldn't harm the amenity of nearby occupiers. He declined to do that because he just wants to establish the principle. So he removed all reference to numbers and he just now is seeking the principle of residential, whether that be one unit, 10 units, 15 units. In terms of the quantum that would be achieved on the site, if members were happy to approve it, that would be determined through a separate application at the reserve matter stage. And you're not agreeing to any particular quantum here, just the principle, if that's the way you wish to progress with the application. And the only reason the application is actually before you today is because of the need for a 106 agreement. And we've had to engineer that just in case that the number of units that they come back with is 10 or more. Clearly, if it's less than 10, it wouldn't trigger the need for a 106. But because we have to deal with all matters that we're aware of at the outline stage, we've had to put a 106 in the event that 10 or more come forward. As you can see from the plan in front of you, you could easily accommodate at least one dwelling on the site quite easily without being detrimental to either residential amenity or highway safety if it was on the same building line as the adjacent properties. And therefore, we're happy that the principle of some form residential development is capable on this site. And we're happy to recommend the application to members. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Somebody does seem to be indicating, but I can't see who it is. I see a little
Councillor Marat, Chair.
Okay. Would you like to come in?
Yeah, I would just like to ask Stuart. Has the applicant agreed to this 106 condition, Stuart? Does he have to, you know, say yes now he does agree to it?
It will only happen in the event that it comes back at the reserve matter stage with 10 or more dwellings. So it's an obligation that's placed on all developments for 10 or more. And it's not a case of the applicant agreeing it. It's a requirement of the planning permission, unless they submit a viability assessment that says that the scheme wouldn't be viable with it. He's aware that this would be subject to a 106, but he hasn't submitted any viability agreement to argue that away. So he is aware of it and it's a standard practice for all developments of 10 or more properties.
Okay, thanks, Stuart.
Is there anybody else who would like to ask a question? So I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved.
Thank you, Chair. Any amendments or further comments from members before I formally conduct the vote? No, in which case I'll start with you again, councillor Brian. Your vote, please?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on this application. Just to confirm, the voting was unanimous, i.e. nine in favour, none against, no abstentions. And the application is therefore approved on that basis. With that in mind, we'll now move on to our next item of business, and that's item number eight on today's agenda, relating to Adlington House on Adlington Street, Liverpool three in Central Ward. At this stage, can I ask colleagues to display images of the application site on screen? And the case officer to do an overview of that before we bring in further speakers via the Chair.
Okay, Mike Fergal here. Just wait for the images to appear on screen. Okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Fergal McEvoy, team leader for City Centre Development Management. The item in front of you today is an application for prior approval to site telecommunications equipment on the rooftop of Adlington House. Adlington House is one of two 15-storey high-rise blocks between Marybone and Henry Edward Street. The other building being Fishman House. There is existing telecommunications equipment on the rooftop. A total of 12 antennae exist on the current rooftop. Under the current application, this would be reduced to 10. The proposal involves the erection of three antennae around the planned enclosure of the rooftop to Adlington House. The telecommunications equipment would be set back six metres from the perimeter of the building. Each antennae would be approximately two metres in height, two and a half metres in width, and mounted on a five-metre-high tripod mount. So there'd be a net reduction on the amount of antennae erected on the rooftop of the building. However, the new antennae would be approximately two metres higher than those that exist currently. There would also be a new 1.6 metre diameter dish and a 1.1 perimeter handrail around the rooftop of the building. As per the previous two applications, this is a prior approval application. So officers can only assess the application in terms of the design of the telecommunications equipment and the sizing of such equipment. Chair, I'll pass to members. I understand one or two of a number of questions.
Yes. At the moment, because the plans on my screen, I can't see who is indicating. So would they like to come in? I can't see who is indicating. I know somebody has indicated, but it's not coming up on my screen who would like to speak. So would they just like to come in?
Chair, probably the case officer may be referencing the three objectives.
My apologies. I was referencing the three War Councils, not a member of the planning committee.
I see. Okay. I got confused there. But are there any questions from members of the planning committee? It would not seem so at this stage. But I'm going to invite the three War Councils to speak. And I've got them listed in order by surname. So can I invite Christine Banks to speak first, please?
Christine, if you'd just make sure you've unmuted your microphone, please?
Shall we pass on to the next councillor then, which is councillor Small? And Christine could come back in later. Councillor Small, would you like to speak?
Yeah, can people hear me?
We can. We can, Nick.
Fantastic. I'm obviously aware of the planning policy on this and to realise it's a controversial issue with lots of residents and, you know, our hands are tied, planning committees' hands are tied in terms of what you can and can't consider on that. I wanted to speak today, I wanted to make representations because we've been contacted by quite a few residents living in Adlington House who were concerned about this. And they have legitimate concerns about it. And I think it's right that we as councillors articulate those concerns and advocate for people. But I'm conscious that we're doing that within a very tight context of the policy on this in terms of what's a relevant planning concern and what isn't. And I think most of what residents have raised probably isn't a relevant planning concern on this. And what residents are concerned about is still around the potential health impact of this with it being so close to where they live on top of the building. And they're also concerned, and I think this is a relevant planning concern, around the appearance of this on top of the building. Yes, there already are antennae there. There have been for some, has been for some time. And it doesn't look particularly good at the moment, but I think the size of these new antennae that are going to go up are going to look worse. It is in a very prominent site on the edge of the city centre in Marybone. Everyone's going to be able to see this. And that's the other aspect that residents are very concerned with about this. We are separately having conversations with your housing, who are the who are the social landlord in the block about what they can do to put that specifically into that community, into that block to kind of compensate residents for the, you know, for having the antennae there. And that'll be a conversation that we'll be having separately on this. But both Christine and I today wanted to turn up here to articulate those which the residents had quite strongly held views around that, but within the context of, you know, obviously there is clear policy clear policy on this, but residents are still very concerned about these proposals.
Are there any questions for Nick before I bring Christine in? Dave, did you have a question? No. Can I ask Christine Banks to come in now, please?
Can you hear me now?
We can, Christine, loud and clear.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we had a meeting with two of the residents because, as you know, about social distance. But what we've got, what I presume what was happening is we've only got six up there at the moment and they're going to be replaced with another three. I didn't know there was 12 up there altogether. The other thing is, is the residents, they have to live under this. And as Nick said, we're going to be talking to the social landlord provider. And the thing is, is the social landlord provider is getting funding for this. And as you know, what they pay, like your council or the housing associations or the registered landlords, depends on what area they're putting these masks up in. Now, Marybone, as you know, is city centre. We have a lot of students, we have the universities, and you've got the city centre with a lot of businesses. Now, the residents are saying is because they pay for everything in that block, they get nothing back from their social landlord for having these antennae on the top. But first, can I ask if they go, is it right that they've got 12 up there or is it six? And they're replacing them and then adding another three? Unmused.
Okay.
If you'd like to come in.
Thank you, Councillor Barnes. On the plans submitted and the information the officers report, there are currently 12 12 antennae on the existing building. The proposal is to these kind of to have two antennae on the one pole. So there would be an actual net reduction in the overall number of separate antennae on the existing rooftop, albeit there will be higher than those that are there at present.
Okay, thank you for that. So I think this is something, I mean, I know it's nothing to do with planning, is we need to know what these social landlords, what they're getting from these mass companies to hire those spaces on top of these blocks. Because all I can see is the people of the city, well, they might be getting mobile phone stuff, but what they're getting, they have to live in this block. They have those on top of them living in this block. We don't see the block actually getting anything else of having these masks on because I've got a list here of what they pay per year because they pay a service charge of £1,172 per year, 56 pounds. And we want to know, and the residents know it's not under planning, but I'd like to know how much those mass companies are paying that side load to have those masks on top of that block. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Christine. Dave, would you like to come in? Councillor Cummings?
Thanks, Chair. I only want to ask a question, and it's alluding to what Christine has just mentioned. Is it possible for us as a committee to request an amendment to this? And the amendment would be, if we approve this planning application, would the residents receive some financial or any recompense to this planning application? Is that possible or is it not possible?
Councillor Cummings, no, that's not possible. It's a separate conversation. Okay.
Are there any other questions? Well, I also have down that councillor Murray Toulon would like to speak, but I don't see her on my screen.
That's correct, Chair. I don't believe councillor Toulon has joined us today, unfortunately. I believe councillors Small and Banks were, however, speaking on their behalf on this occasion.
And on behalf of the residents, it's quite plain. It is unfortunate, I feel, that we cannot do something about the issue of the service charge. But I do personally think that these mobile phone companies should be benefiting the residents in some positive way. But obviously, that has to be done through the landlord in this case. So there being no other questions, but I can see I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved.
Thank you, Chair. Do members have any amendments to make at all before I move to the formal vote? Now, in which case, we'll take you first, Chair. Your vote, please?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings? Councillor Cummings, if you could just unmute your microphone, please? So just confirm that vote again, please, for clarity. Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat? Thank you. Councillor
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Oh.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Oh.
Councillor Lavelle? Councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Just for purposes of clarity, the voting on this item is seven members in favour of the application, two members voting against, no abstentions, and therefore the effect of the application is carried on that basis. Just to the two members who voted against, would you like your respective dissent recording? Thank you, councillor Kemp, Lavelle, does that apply to you, please? I'll record it anyway, okay, thank you, Anthony, thank you, Richard, thank you, colleagues. With that in mind, the application is therefore approved on that basis and will now move on to our next item of business. Thank you, Christine. Our next item of business is item number nine on today's agenda, which is a site at Speak Road in Garston, Liverpool 19, in Speak Garston Ward.
Do we have Mr Duffy to speak?
We do, Chair, I'd ask my colleague to also display the presentation images on screen at the same time, so Mr Duffy can talk to those as well.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I'll just wait for the presentation.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee, my name is Stuart Duffy from Keith Davidson Partnership in Liverpool. We're architects and the agent for the proposed application. I'll just wait for the first slide. Next slide, please. The proposal is for the erection of three blocks of three to four storey buildings comprised, which comprise 70 floor apartments and six ground floor retail units with associated facilities and car park. It's located along Speak Road in Garstick District Centre, which is the former swimming bath site. Back in 2005, we gained planning approval for 68 apartments, which was three blocks, very similar design, and that was three and four story. The only difference with this application is that the increase, as you look at the image on the top right hand corner, we have increased the four story to the frontage of Speak Road, which we did through conversation with your officers and the urban design officer, because we felt the slope of the street, it would read really well in the street scene. Next slide, please. As you can see on the left hand side, you've got the apartment mix, one bed, two person, two bed, four person and so on. The majority of the apartments are two bedroom units. As you look, actually, next slide, please. The following site plan shows, the top right corner shows that, the green dash line shows that all cars and service vehicles will enter from Speak Road through a one way system and exit at the side on Church Road. The bin storage is all collected on route, so everything's collected on site and not on the main Speak Road, which is quite heavily trafficked with buses and various vehicles. You can see along Speak Road also, the blue dots indicate where the retail units are located along Speak Road. The red dots indicate where the main entrances are to the three blocks, the residential entrances. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, the previous scheme back in 2005 was three and four story. You can just see a very faint yellow line, which was the height of the original approval. So basically, we're increasing the four story mainly to the right hand side, but as you can see with the street scene, as the street grain slopes upwards towards where the bellway site is already built. Through discussion with the urban design, we felt it worked really well. Also, what we're looking to do in terms of the materials, we gave two terms in terms of bricks. So we've got a bramble brick and a buff brick to just give some articulation and finistration and a visual interest to the street scene. Next slide, please. There's a couple of images top left hand corner showing how the brickwork are particular and give some rhythm to the street scene and then the retail to the ground floor. Thank you, and we respectfully request you support your officers' recommendations. We are happy to take any questions now, thank you.
I'd like to invite a question from councillor Cummings. Would you like to go ahead, Joe?
Yeah, I didn't indicate anything.
All right, well, it has come up with that little yellow electronic hand. Is there anybody else who's got a question?
It's Richard Kemp, I still can't work out the electronic hand.
Don't worry, Richard, you go ahead and answer your question.
All right, thank you. I've got no real objection to the proposal, but given that something like 20% of all the retail units in the area are currently unused, and it's likely that post coronavirus lockdown, et cetera, all the predictions are that the number of empty retail premises will decline. Are the six units capable of being changed instead to more residential accommodation? Because I just suspect they're going to be empty for a long, long time.
Would you like to come back on that, Mr Duffy?
Yes, the proposed scheme is going to be 100% social affordable housing. And what we've discussed with the end user who's going to be purchasing the site from my clients is that, subject to how things develop with retail, as you mentioned, linked to Corona, it may well be that some of those units are turned into communal facilities on the ground floor, so we still retain the animation, because when we were speaking with the planning department, they did not want to lose their animation to the ground floor. It wouldn't be pleasant to have some units, ground floor residential facing the bus stop, so probably if it changed to anything more communal facilities.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions?
Councillor Cummings has indicated, Chair.
Councillor Cummings, you are indicating now, would you like to go ahead?
That's good indication, Stan. And I actually think it's a good intervention by Richard for, on the second point of the communal space, I think that would be more appropriate, and I would like to raise an amendment on that point.
Well, when the time comes, councillor Cummings, Michael can invite you to do that. Can I now pass over to our case officer, please, to address the committee?
Thank you, Chair, just waiting for the video to kick in. Okay, that's better. Thank you for that, Chair, yeah, you've got a very detailed report from the agent, and you've got a very detailed report in front of you, and you've got a detailed presentation from the agent. There's not much really I can add to that, other than to sort of give an overview. And as you've heard, there was a scheme granted in 2005 on the site, which for whatever reason never came to fruition. This part of the district centre in question is a particular eyesore in the heart of Garston. It's in the part of the district centre that's quite buoyant. It tends to be the other end of St Mary's Road, where we've got high levels of vacancy. This end is pretty good, and we're looking to ensure as best we can to maintain that vitality and viability, thus the retail units on the ground floor. They can be flexibly adapted if need be, if clearly six, 12 months down the line, there's absolutely no demand for them, and they can become communal hairdressers for residents, gyms, things like that, but still giving that active frontage within the heart of the district centre. And that's something that we always aim to achieve in all our district centres, maintaining that commercial viability. And in terms of the design, you've seen that in front of you, we think it's a perfectly acceptable design in terms of its scale and massing it in this part of the district centre, it picks up on heights of nearby buildings. And the highway side of things has been very carefully assessed by our highways officers, and the numbers were reduced somewhat just to make sure that the ratios were acceptable. It's only before members today because of the section 106 requirement, we've had no objections to it from any locals. And your office has really welcomed the scheme, as it's a site within the heart of the district centre that's really needed developing for some time now, and we're happy to recommend it to you for approval, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I can't see anybody indicating with a question, just come in if any of you do want to speak. All right, well, I am very happy to move that this recommendation be approved. I remember when the baths existed there, and I regret it ever since, whenever I go down to Garston, that there hasn't been a redevelopment of that site. But, Michael, you will give adequate opportunity for any bodies to come in with an amendment.
Thank you, Chair, thank you for moving the resolution on this item. Councillor Cummings, you have indicated, if you could unmute and comment on it, if necessary, move your amendment.
Thank you, thank you. And just to repeat what I said before, I would like to raise an amendment on the pre-existing plans for commercial plots to be turned into communal social areas, given what was mentioned by councillor Kemp, and I think that would be an appropriate slight change.
In relation to that particular amendment, councillor Cummings, as members will be aware, as a committee, you can only consider the application that's placed before you in terms of the submission from the applicants, and obviously, that's proposed a series of uses at this stage. Obviously, if there's any changes in terms of the market position, the applicant may then review their position going forward. But at present, the motion, as it stands, will not be acceptable, simply because we would be compelling the applicant to change their particular scheme and become a different proposal. Obviously, the different use classes within which the different uses of the ground floor units may fall as well, so that provides opportunity for alternative use. But certainly, the agent has made aware of your views and indeed the views of the committee, and that can be fed back directly to the applicant if any further changes are needed.
In response to that, so we have the recommendation?
Sorry, councillor Cummings, just reiterating.
In response to what you've said, could we just add the recommendation?
To what effect, please?
For the communal space to be used instead of a commercial space?
I would suggest that that would be incapable in effect, because it's essentially seeking to move the same amendment to which I've already addressed. What the committee can note as a narrative, rather than a resolution, is to request the applicants, in terms of the ongoing use and occupation of the retail units, to give due consideration to appropriate end uses depending on their level of occupation at that time. Obviously, that's not part of the resolution, but it's a narrative comment from members of the committee, if members are agreeable to that.
That's what I would like.
Councillor Kemp would like to say something, would you like to come in, Richard?
It's only to agree that as a narrative point, I believe that that location, if they can use it for retail, they should. It's only if they can that we would then ask them, but I think that's picked up in the way that Mike described the suggested way. He's very happy with that.
Thank you, Chair, do you have any further comments before I actually move to the vote on the item now?
I would like to just keep it as it is, but obviously, we've made the architect aware that if the retail is not going to get off the ground, we'd like other uses to be considered. I don't think that we should make things too harsh, because we really welcome the development of this site. So I move a recommendation be approved as it is.
Thank you, Chair, with those comments noted, I'll move to the vote now. So Chair, your vote, please.
I agree.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Councillor Marret?
Agreed.
Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Just to confirm the outcome of that vote, nine members have voted in favour, no members have voted against, no members have abstained, therefore the application is approved. And the additional narrative comments made by members of the committee during debate will also be included within the minute and resolution for this decision. On that basis, this application is approved, and we move immediately on to agenda item 10, which relates to the site at the central reservation opposite number 220 Chilwell Road in Liverpool 15, which is located in Waiver Tree Ward. Now, similar to a number of early items of business on today's agenda, we have no speakers either for or against this application. So at this point, I would ask my colleague to display images of the actual application site and proposed development, and also for the case officer concerned to introduce themselves and provide a commentary in relation to the proposed development.
Thank you, Mike. As members will know, this is an application for another mast, it's part of the wider 5G rollout programme across the city, so members will be familiar with the issues that surround these applications. Again, we're only allowed to consider citing in design for prior approval applications. It is what it is, it's a 20 metre high mast, and it's to be located in the central reservation. And we consider it to be significantly or suitably visually distanced from a further mast on the opposite side of the Five Ways Roundabout, by virtue of the fact that there's trees in the middle of the roundabout that will filter views between the two. Again, it's a matter of balance for members to weigh the benefits of 5G technology against the visual harm that these masts inevitably do, they are clearly bigger in the street scene, but they're designed as best they can, albeit they are clearly obviously a 20 metre high mast. As previously, if members are minded to approve, we would recommend that a further condition be attached, requiring the cabinets to be painted green, keeping the mast grey. Yeah, there's not a lot else I can add, I'm afraid, Chair, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I believe councillor Cummings has a question. Councillor Cummings?
Thank you, Chair. With regard to this, you mentioned before that there was a planning application, I think it was some three years back, about the other mast that is already placed there that you mentioned. Couldn't that mast be added to with the two providers? Or if not, I would not have an issue with this new mast going on to the Five Ways Roundabout?
Okay, in terms of the sharing option, the existing mast that exists, that's already occupied by two operators, to the best of my knowledge. So this would be, the size that the mast would need to be structurally to hold more than two operators would make it significantly bigger, that's my understanding on the technological front. In terms of locating it in the middle of the roundabout, I'm going to hazard a guess that my colleagues in highways would not be overly comfortable with the ability to service it and implement it being in the middle of a roundabout, but I'll leave that to Andy Dingwall to make comments on, if he would. Furthermore, again, by the image that was on the screen before, there are trees in the roundabout, but clearly any mast and associated cable and equipment would undoubtedly affect, which would require the removal. So what you would be doing is you'd be moving this mast within about 15, 20 metres of the other mast. You'd actually be creating more visual clutter by moving it to the roundabout. So your officers believe that this is a better location, in that it will be visually separated from the other one. And that's why we're happy that this is the optimal location, Chair.
In response to what you've said, okay, I'm not going to argue with that. Although, if Andy Ball could come back about the traffic implications, I would appreciate that. Has any other place within that vicinity been looked upon? I mean, I myself, I think where the M62 meets Queen's Drive, that is an area of retail and traffic interchange whereby a mast would not be more... that is an area of retail and traffic interchange whereby a mast would not be noticeable as that thing considered.
Yep, with all of these masts councillor, they have a certain range that they cover and if you try and move it too far away from where it's proposed, it loses the purpose of being there. As I've said before, these things are driven by the demand, which is unfortunately residential populations. Try and put this up by the Five Ways, and there's an existing mast up by the Five Ways, sorry, up by the M62, that would be way too far away. You'd just leave another gap in the coverage area, so you'd still need a mast here. So there's not much scope you've got to play with in terms of how far you can move it without creating gaps in the network. And what we've got here, we've got two educational facilities nearby and I suppose the last thing we really want to do is putting these things into educational facilities. So particularly with dual carriageways, they're often deemed the most appropriate location because they tend to have lighting columns and the like. So they have looked at all firms, this is the optimum solution and the 62.
Your word that mast is going to be put is right by a school.
It is, I accept that, I accept that, but it's not in the school and that's why those sites have been discounted.
Now, can I just remind you that it's very difficult if we get into detentions, we need to all have our say separately on this. So I'd like to hand over now to Andy Dingwall to discuss what councillor Cummings has proposed as putting it in the middle of the roundabout and what that would mean in terms of traffic disruption.
Yeah, thanks Chair, Andy Dingwall, I was developing consulting leader. I'll try and put it very simply, we just wouldn't support a proposal to install a mast and cabinets in the centre of a very, well, probably what is the busiest roundabout within the city. The consequences for personnel who are required to maintain service, the cabinet and mast will be quite significant in terms of having to cross the roundabout with live traffic circulating on it. So we would see that as a real potential hazard and we wouldn't support a proposal to put a mast and cabinet in the centre of a roundabout.
Thank you very much, that's really plain. Now, are there any other people who would like to comment on this or ask a question before I move to the vote? Okay, so can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, do members have any amendments to move before I conduct the vote? No? Okay, Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
And I want my dissent recorded.
Noted, that'll be recorded, thank you Dave. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp? Just to reconfirm, Richard, your mic's on mute. Thank you. I'll take those positive indication. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Lavelle? Councillor Lavelle? Your mic's on mute, so I can't hear you unfortunately. Councillor Marat? Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you Joe. Councillor Marat, just go back to you. Councillor Lavelle, just can go back to you, so we can hear you now. Unable to hear councillor Lavelle, therefore he's not voting on this particular item of business. That, I believe, concludes the vote on this item and the voting is six members in favour, two members against and no abstentions. The two members voting against councillors Cummings and Marat, your individual dissent will be recorded on the minutes as well. On that basis, the recommendation is therefore approved and we will move on to our next item of business, which is item number 11 on today's agenda, which relates to Milton Road off Edge Lane, Liverpool 13 in Pickton Ward. Similar to our last item of business, we have no speakers either for or against this particular application. Therefore, I ask my colleagues to again, display some visuals and images of the application site at this stage and also for the case officer if they could unmute their microphone and to introduce and comment on the proposal before committee to assist members and members of the public who are viewing the live stream.
Thank you Chair, thank you Mike, thank you members. Can everybody see and hear me again?
We can.
Chair, I don't really have a great deal to say on this particular application. You'll see from the report that there's not been a significant level of objection in relation to this particular proposal and I suspect part of the reason for that is its location within a predominantly commercial and retail area off Edge Lane. So the mast would be off Milton Road, it's located quite near the new converted Travelodge, sorry, the Travelodge in the converted building and you've got the new range just up the road. So as I say, it's within that wholly commercial area. It's a 20 metre high mast. Similar issues apply to those items that you've considered earlier today in relation to citing a design. Can't really say anything further than that Chair, happy to answer any questions that members may have.
Do any members have a question? Well, it would seem not, so I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved.
Thank you Chair, before I conduct the vote, just to confirm, if any member has an amendment, please indicate now. No, in which case I'll move straight to the vote on this item. Move it to you first Chair.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the vote on the item, the voting is unanimous, i.e. nine in favour and none against or abstaining, therefore the application is approved on that basis. And we move to our next item of business, number 12 on today's agenda, which relates to the Victoria Public House, 1 Victoria Road in Egbert in Liverpool 17, which is in Mossley Hill Ward. Similar to a number of items today, we have no speakers either for or against this particular item. So again, I'll ask my colleague to display some images to support our consideration of the application and I would likewise ask the case officer concerned to comment on those images once they appear on screen as they are doing now. Thank you.
Thank you Chair and thank you Mike. Yeah, this is an application primarily for physical structures within the curtilage of the pub which is currently closed, it was closed before lockdown, so it's been a vacant pub with a view to bring it back into use. The vast majority of the objections received from residents all relate to the actual use of the outside area. But what members need to be aware of is that they don't need planning permission to use that now. It's completely lawful, it's completely unrestricted by virtue of it being a historic pub. So we cannot control the hours of anyone using that outside facility. So as is shown in your proposal and the description of development, it's for physical works such as amendment changes to the building, pergolas, bestoon lighting and all of these structures and additions are considered to be acceptable. So it's not to have any impact on residential amenity or the character of the conservation area. So in light of that Chair, I'm happy to recommend approval, but happy to answer any questions should there be any.
The background is not on mute and I would request that everyone would be on mute unless you've got a question. I cannot see anybody indicating that they'd like to speak. If anybody does, would they just come in? Councillor Cummings, is that your hand going up? No councillor Cummings? And I also wanted to come in here before I move the amendment to say that as our case officer Stuart Clark has said, because there's a historical use for a pub, they don't actually have to comply with any planning conditions over noise. But they have voluntarily said they would not have any outside noise after 10.30 and you will notice that there won't be any amplified music allowed outside either. So with that in mind, can I move that the recommendation be approved?
Thank you Chair, any amendments from members? No, in which case I'll move straight to the vote. Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Lavelle?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the vote on that item of business, the vote is unanimous, i.e. nine in favour, none against, no abstentions and the application is approved on that basis. We therefore move on to our next item of business, number 13 on today's papers and our application relates to number 69 Woodcroft Road, Liverpool 15 in Pickton Ward. We have no speakers either for or against this application. So similarly to previous applications, I would ask colleagues to display images of the proposed developments on site and for the case officer to offer some commentary in relation to proposals.
Thank you Chair, thank you members, thank you Mike. Chair, you've got a very full report in front of you that deals with all the particular issues. The committee is very familiar with this type of application, particularly in this part of the city. So as you can see, it's a proposal to convert the property to a house of multiple occupation for total of eight residents and that is facilitated by the erection of a single storey extension to the rear, a dormer extension to the rear and some roof lights and that obviously allows for the use of that roof space. Chair, you'll see from the report that your officers consider the scheme to be compliant with your policies in terms of the internal room sizes. Obviously, there is often concern about the impact of these cumulatively. This is an area where it's identified as being significant in terms of the concentration of HMOs, but unfortunately at this stage, your policy can only be given, excuse me, limited weight in the local plan. And furthermore, there is no Article 4 direction that would allow for the triggering of the policy in any case. So for all of those reasons Chair, we have recommended approval subject to the various conditions set out in your report. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
Could I ask one please, Trish?
Yes.
This relates, insofar as we can relate, to a post-COVID situation where it is quite clear we are going to have at least the next three or four years 10% less students, a lot less economic activity and where we do have an overhang of HMOs, student accommodation etcetera in the city. And this isn't a political point, this is just a general recognition of the problems that Liverpool's going through. In these circumstances, is there any way in which we could amend what we want to do in the light of the COVID situation? Because I suspect that this application, if it does go ahead or simply be an empty set of units, can we do anything to circumvent normal planning policy in terms of the Coronavirus Act or whatever to avoid what I think will be increased property problems in future?
Well, I will hand over to our case officer, but this does seem to be an extremely wide question in light of a lot wider area than your particular patch John. But John, if you'd like to comment?
Thank you Chair, the short answer to councillor Kemp's question is that no, we don't have any power, we can't set aside the current policies. I understand that the point being made, but as a planning committee, as officers, we have to make decisions in accordance with the development plan. That is currently the UDP, together with any other material considerations, which obviously is the local plan. I've already given some commentary on the weight that we can give to that local plan. And for those reasons Chair, we have to make the decision on the basis of those documents. We can't really use COVID as an opportunity to vary those policies. There would have to be some proper approach through the local plan to do that. Hope that clarifies and again, happy to answer any questions that members may have.
So can I move that the recommendation be approved?
Thank you Chair, before I conduct the vote, any amendments or comments from members? No, in which case Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Kemp? Against councillor Kemp?
No, abstain.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Councillor Lavelle? Thank you. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Councillor Hanson? Thank you Joe. That concludes the vote on that item and just to confirm the voting, that is eight in favour, none against, one abstentions, which I'll record for councillor Kemp in the minutes and effectively therefore is the application approved on that basis. And we will therefore move to our last item of business today, number 14 on today's agenda, which relates to number 251 Kensington, which is in Liverpool 7 and located in the Kensington and Fairfield Ward. I'm going to ask colleagues to display images of a presentation on site at this stage, but we do have a number of speakers for this application. Chair, if you could invite those in favour in at this juncture please.
We have Lee Dillon, who would like to address the issue and James O'Neil, who are on line.
Hi.
Can we have Lee please?
Hi, good morning Chair and members of the committee. Just like to say thanks for letting me speak on behalf of this application. Kensington, it's an area of regeneration, it's also a gateway to our city. 251 Kensington in Quehr the last decade, adding to the decline of the area. By supporting the application, we will be helping the shortage of housing in the area for working professionals. Also adding chargeable revenue to the city with council tax which hasn't been charged on the property for the last 10 years, the HMO licence which is chargeable annually and also the money the actual tenants will be spending on the local area. The HMO, when it's completed, will be managed by addressed properties estate agents who manage a lot of our previous properties that we've renovated. They let them out to working professionals in the city as NHS nurses and people like that. The tenants are all working professionals who add value to our city's regeneration and also by letting the property through the management company, this will give more control over the tenants than private lettings as the tenants are all vetted with reference agencies and guarantors. When considering what 251 Kensington could be converted into, a HMO is the most viable use for the building. Each room, all have en suite bathrooms, all comply with HMO regulations and it has a large ground floor communal area with around 28 square metres, which is over the recommended requirement for the HMO. We also have an email from John Davy, who owns the chemist next door to the property and he writes in support of the planning application. He also says the property has been idle for a decade or so. Mr Bill and his team have renovated several properties locally to a good standard. Valuable workers' housing is being offered within walking cycling distance of the city centre, hospitals and universities. More people with employment are helping to lift our area, its perception and the feel of the neighbourhood. We have seen students move away from the area into the city centre for some time now with the proliferation of new housing supply, but this has rapidly reversed recently as so many people need value as well as convenience to amenities. This is a further part of Kensington regeneration, which was so valueless to this area so long ago that a site on the reservoir was built. ago that a site on the reservoir was built, a few houses, Jubilee Drive, et cetera, improved, and so much money spent on consultations. He also says this should go ahead, as he also plans further local improvements and creation of housing and living spaces. He also wants to work with the City Council planners in a new build strategy in conjunction with the Metro Mayor and Dave Monaghan, our IBA architects. He also said...
Did you hear the sound from Mr Dillon?
Yeah, it looks like he's been cut off.
Appears like he's having signal problems. Let's just wait for him to come back on, and we may want to move on to Mr O'Rourke, who's also in support of this application, and list it to speak.
Yeah. Well, I'm just basically here for any questions, so...
That's what I got, Mr O'Rourke, that you're just here for questions, not to speak. But if Lee Dillon doesn't come on, you might want to add something, but we'll give him a couple more minutes.
I do think he's... Hello? Oh, he's back.
Hello, are you back with us, Mr Dillon?
Hi, yes.
Do carry on.
The electric has just gone off in my street, so all the internet went down, it took me completely off the pitch, so he just further goes on to say...
We'll just hear with your comments. Do carry on if you can. Please carry on if you're able to do so.
Yes, I am. So just to finish off, John Davy also, we need more people around who will invest themselves in Kensington, keep it clean, appreciate it as a place to live and work. So I ask everyone, I ask the Chair and the members of the committee to also support this application, please. And the pictures you can see are a recent job we done in Mill Street, so you can see their building was in complete disrepair, and we brought it back onto the market for many years to come, bringing more people into the city and giving them somewhere to live. So thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you can back me on this application, please.
Are there any questions from members of the committee, please? I don't see anybody indicating. Please come in if there is anybody that I'm missing, because I'm also seeing all the photographs on the screen, so I can't see all your faces at the moment. Okay, well, I'm going to hand over now to councillor Liam Robinson, who wants to speak again.
Good morning, everyone, and wonderful to see everyone. I'm glad everyone's safe and well. Thanks ever so much for the opportunity to speak, and whilst we're pleased that the applicants have virtually attended the committee, and that speaks volumes about their noble intent, we still have dire concerns about the application, and I will go through those accordingly. First and foremost, as committee members have heard me say on numerous occasions, we have far too many houses of multiple occupation within the Kensington Fairfield area, and we have real concerns about some of the criminal and social behaviour issues that that absolutely exacerbates in the area with people with very sort of complex support needs, often residing in these HMOs. We're very, very conscious of the fact that the Kensington corridor has a number of problems with things like street drinking, prostitution and drug dealing, and we have real concerns that naturally, whilst it's very noble that Mr Dillon and others are suggesting that professionals would live in the property, and we hope they would, we have real concerns that absolutely that might not transpire because of those issues, and then you might have to turn to other residents with much more complex needs, and that could put additional pressure on the area. We also believe that the size of the property, turning it into an eight-bed HMO, we have real concerns about partners and others staying the night, so conceivably up to 16 people could be living in the property each night. We've got real problems about the parking situation. The A57 corridor does not allow parking on it, rightfully so, but within the side streets, like Holtsbury Road, just around the corner, the real parking issues of an evening, and we've got concerns about if there are eight residents or more, that that will only add to those problems. Equally, we're really disappointed about the lack of a defined refuse management plan. Often, these kind of shop frontage-type properties give us some of the biggest problems with refuse in the area, and unfortunately, a number of the alleyways, including the one that kind of buttresses onto this property, has an issue with vermin and flytipping, and we've got concerns about that. Whilst we're pleased to see that the application is to bring this property back into use, we actually believe it would be much more appropriate to turn it into a couple of flats or one single dwelling, because actually, that would be more sustainable for the community and would deliver a profitable return, maybe not as much as an HMO, but in the long term, better for our community and better for the business that's behind it. So we would ask the committee to refuse permission and reject the application. Thank you.
Are there any questions for councillor Robinson? No, I don't see any. So can I hand over to our case officer to comment now, please?
Thank you, Chair. Again, members are familiar with the issues around HMOs, and you do have the full report in front of you. I think I would like, on this occasion, however, to bring to your attention two particular issues. The first is the location of the property, and that's obviously within a local shopping centre, so it is within a small block of retail units. I think there is a chemist on one side and a betting office on the other, and again, on the opposite side of the road, there are commercial and retail facilities. So other than this property, the whole block would be retail. Similarly, the next block either side is also retail. However, notwithstanding that, your officers' view is that the principle of a conversion to residential is appropriate. A similar conversion has been undertaken on the adjacent block, and that sort of principle is acceptable both within the UDP and the local plan policies, subject, of course, to other considerations. So that's the first sort of difference from the typical HMO application that this committee considers. The second that obviously follows from that is that there is obviously then an issue in relation to the visual appearance, given that you are moving from a shop front to a residential-type frontage. Again, your officers have looked at this, and they are satisfied with the details that have been provided, but of course, it is again a matter that is slightly different from the normal HMO applications that you consider regularly at this committee. Chair, other than those, the issues around concentration of HMOs, the occupancy and so on that councillor Robinson has raised are familiar and well rehearsed by this committee. Unfortunately, again, the area within which the application site is, does not benefit from any policies through the local plan at this stage that deal with over-concentration in terms of occupancy. Again, that is not a matter that your officers can control through the planning process. The usual standards have been applied in relation to the consideration of this application, and again, they're set out in your agenda papers, and your officers are satisfied that the internal configuration of rooms meets those standards and is acceptable. Chair, other than that, I don't have any further comments to make, but of course, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just had two questions, Chair, if I might. First is, I think it's the first item on the agenda today, we were told it was very important to keep retail at street level, because that encouraged the ambiance of the area, and the planning department really liked the idea that there wouldn't be residential on the ground floor in speak. I can't understand then why they're making exactly the opposite case for retail against residential in Kensington. The second question, again, might be slightly wider, but I understood from the chief executive that we were hoping to move to the planning inspector's consideration of the local plan in May. Now, the longer it goes on, are we able to attach more weight to the council submission on things like HMOs? Because the planning inspector, for quite understandable reasons, has been unable to call a normal inspection and review of the plan process in the normal way.
So I'll hand back over to you, John. You might not be so happy to answer on the second point, but that's entirely up to you.
I'll do my best, Chair. Thank you. councillor Kemp, in relation to your first question, you're right, we will try and seek to maintain centres, and obviously, the application site is within a local centre, and that's why I've specifically brought it to members' attention in relation to this proposal. It is slightly different. However, your officers' view is that this proposal of itself will not undermine the viability of that centre, and as I say, there is a precedent on the immediate block adjacent where this has been allowed. So it's one of those, Chair, where you have to sort of weigh in the planning balance. You've heard from the applicant that this has been a site that has been vacant for over 10 years, and there is a number of vacancies within the Kensington local centre, and your officers' view is that on balance, an alternative use for residential is appropriate, it would not of itself undermine the viability and functioning of that local centre. Of course, that is a matter for you and members of the planning committee to reach a judgement on. In relation to the wider question around the local plan process, the simplest answer is that the closer we get to, or the further we go through the local plan process, the greater weight that we can attach to the local plan itself in draft form, and it also depends on whether or not objections have been received to that. Our experience so far through various planning appeals is that limited weight is being given to that local plan, particularly in the light of some of the representations that have been received, including in relation to policies that are attributable for this particular application. Can an exception be made because of the current COVID situation? My answer will be it's very unlikely. Again, we have to have regard to case law and particularly the wording in NPPF, which talks about the issues and which is set out in the policy section of your papers, Chair, in relation to this item. So I hope that answers any questions, but again, happy to respond if necessary. Thank you.
Very much, John. Are there any other questions? I don't see anybody indicating. So I'm going to move on and say, can I move that the recommendation be approved?
Thank you, Chair. Do members have any amendments or comments before I move to the formal vote? No indications, in which case, Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. councillor Kemp. Again, was that against, Richard? Is that against? Yeah, okay, thank you. councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
councillor Lavelle.
Agreed.
Thank you. councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you. councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you. councillor Cummings.
Agreed.
councillor Hanson. Thank you. councillor Merritt.
Agreed.
Thank you. And that concludes the voting on that item. Just to confirm, the voting, that is eight in favour, one against, councillor Kemp, and your dissent will be recorded, and no abstentions, therefore, the application is approved on that basis. Chair, just to confirm, that does conclude today's meeting before you, if you need to make any comments before we cease proceedings.
For everybody putting all their time in today, I do think that we've maybe had a few more issues than usual, but I think it's unavoidable. I think that we're making the very best of these virtual committees, so thanks to those concerned.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members, officers and members of the public presence. To confirm, that concludes today's live stream of committee proceedings. Thank you for watching today's meeting.